Welcome, everybody, to the Monday, March 23 city council meeting. If we can call it an order and have a roll call to establish quorum, please ma'am.
Terry McLung.
Here.
David Mitchell.
Here.
Joyce Sellar.
Here.
James DeVito.
Yeah.
Mickey Schneider.
Here.
Bob Thomas.
Yeah.
We have a states.
All right. Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're going to open up first to have a public hearing to help us out with some of our grants, which would identify and prioritize the needs of the city. And I'm going to open this up and turn it over to Jay Stalard, who's with the Northwest Arkansas Economic Development District.
Thank you, Mayor. This thing helps me when I start doing the minutes there. My name is Jay Stalard. I'm the Grants Administrator with the Northwest Arkansas Economic Development District. I've been their Grants Administrator for about 24 years now. The last time I worked over here in Eureka, to my surprise, was 2007's when we started the Crescent Project and actually took a couple of years to do all the paperwork on it. So that's the last time I was over here. And one of the items that we've got to do tonight is identify and prioritize the needs of the city. At the Development District, we keep a record. It's called a SIDS. And what that acronym is, is Comprehensive Strategic Development Initiative, or something like that. What we refer to it usually as is the Overall Economic Development Plan. It basically outlines where everybody kind of is, all the cities, counties, in this nine county area that I work in, and kind of what your well-known needs are. And so we're pretty familiar with the needs of Eureka Springs already, having you all have been a member of the district since its inception in 1968. And so we're kind of familiar with what you're all are into here. But I wanted to, I handed out these 10 essentials, and I wanted to run over them real quick. Quality education system, access to health care, parks and recreation, solid infrastructure, fourth of housing, quality law enforcement, fire protection, good leadership, diverse economy, willingness to accept outside assistance, visually aesthetic landscaping. That sounds like it was written yesterday, doesn't it? I can assure you, this was a farm co-op, was written in 1965. 1965. It's still relevant. It's a little odd down here, willingness to accept outside assistance, almost a given anymore. But 50 years ago, these items here were pie in the sky for lots and lots of places. You all have achieved a lot of these, but still got more to go. One of the items that we did last time, when we identified and prioritized, was we came up with a number of items. And these were from 19, I mean, from 2007. You all had just your number one priority, low-income and affordable housing, recruitment of new industries and economic development, water, wastewater projects, improved emergency services, additional parking areas, improvement of roads, bridges, sidewalks, and trails, and expansion of senior services. Now, we're not real sure how many of them still need to be up on the number one or two category, but usually what we like to see when we come to a place and do a prioritization is we want to see some projects that we can actually fund. And then we want to see some stuff that, we can't really fund it, but we'd like to include it on our list. We turn this information into several different agencies, federal and state. That's how they develop who and where and what they're going to fund. So all of these kind of meetings we do, we gather them all up, and they get funneled in. And so they are fairly important. At this moment, I'll just open it up for any kind of discussion on what you all think are important items for the city of Eureka Springs. Mayor.
Open it up to the public.
Yes, sir.
Affordable housing.
Affordable housing's been a high priority for the city for a long time. I know for sure it's been hovering up in the top two or three most of the time I've been an administrator with the district. Typically, the recruitment of new industries and economic development, that's a job creation activity. And of course, that's always an important and popular item that we see on here. I'm taking any other suggestions so that I can, yes, ma'am?
Affordable housing.
Affordable housing. Okay. Good. Good. One of the other projects, yes, sir?
I have a question on affordable housing. What is affordable housing?
Can I say something?
Pardon?
When I came home today from work, I went downstairs and I spoke to my mother, and I said, you know, I would really love to see Eureka have a section.
We're going to have to have you come up here to mic phone. We can't hear you. And if you state your name, please.
My name is Shaquina Kadim. Can you hear me? Okay, Shaquina, I came home from work earlier today, and I went and visited with my mother. And I said, you know, I would really love to see Eureka one day have a section of land devoted to affordable housing. I would love to help with something like that. And it could be like small, like one-room homes for people, minimizing on the cost of, you know, the energy sources, and just help people to be able to live here in Eureka better. And my mother just got up and got to the paper and handed me the paper, said, look, there's going to be a meeting. So that's how I ended up here. I just wanted to say, I think that's very important, affordable housing for everyone. And I do think the parking issue is something important as well.
On the affordable housing, HUD has lots of different HUD, which is being Housing and Urban Development, has lots of different type of programs that your regional housing authority would be working on. The type of projects I work on aren't necessarily housing, however, it is always a top priority in most of the places we go to.
Ma'am, is that, you talking about apartment complexes? You talking about single-family residence?
There's a variety of those, and that would have to be, yes, ma'am.
I did have an idea that I neglected to say.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, we need a new meeting.
You think?
I'm sure we've all seen some people take the storage units and actually convert them into little cabins, little homes, if there was some acreage devoted to getting some of those units built, insulated, you know, prepared for people to actually live there, live in them with a little land around it, so that they can, you know, pretty it up and do a little gardening if they wanted to. That was the idea that I had, just small little units, you know, spaced apart, maybe an acre per person, or half an acre per person.
Thank you, ma'am. Yeah, and I would know, that would be between the regional housing authority and the city to come up with plans to improve affordable housing in the city. It is an item we need to list, though, as a priority for the city, so that that conversation can start with the regional housing folks. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Sandy Martin, and I'm here with a couple of projects, I think. I agree that we need affordable housing. I think primarily we need year-round employment, jobs, opportunity with higher education. And there are two concepts. One would be at the north end, the old ice house that is there, it's blighted. And Randy Wolfenberger has a concept that's, I think, been around, but he's brought it forth again, and that is moving the historic museum down there and also creating a water and life museum. That would be fun with interactive activities for kids around science and math. The other is our old high school property. There are several plans moving, you know, going around on that. One is a mixed use. Another one that I prefer, we've been in conversations with North Arkansas Community College for job training, higher education, and also continuing education classes for high school children to be able to go to college on an affordable way, and utilize that as it was intended as a school. Also create an arts center there, a culinary institute there, maybe an indoor/outdoor farmer's market, a community market, and some other housing, or rental space that could be there, and maybe have it solar powered. So those two things, I think, would create jobs. They would re-employ some of the people here. They would create year-round work, and it would hit two areas that are blighted on key entrances to our city. Thank you.
Okay, like I was saying, the, some of the things that are fundable under this program that we operate a lot is economic development, job creation, and it's also water and wastewater projects. And I discussed that with the mayor about extensions and things like that. Safe to say that everybody likes improved emergency services. That's fairly safe to say. And you all are unique in that you all do have a high priority for parking issues. Most places don't. You all do. And if there's anything else, other than what we've previously discussed, or what we've already covered in the 2007 meeting, yes, ma'am?
Black Bass Dam?
Yes. Yeah, and we're aware of that as well.
So I'm putting my foot in for infrastructure.
Infrastructure, yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
What about good leadership? Oh, wait a minute.
I can't go up there.
Next election, fix that.
Joyce, did you have something?
Well, I was talking about a definition of affordable housing, and your question wasn't answered. Is affordable housing something, okay, you go back, I'm always looking, I'm always following the money. Okay, so if you have an average income that you can estimate in Eureka Springs, would affordable housing be something that would rent for like 20% of that annual income? Is that a definition of affordable housing?
I have no idea what affordable housing is.
Oh.
Since I don't work on housing programs or housing projects.
Okay, well, what kind, what money do you oversee that's available to us that we could use?
We predominantly work on the community development block grant funds, but in a public forum that we're prioritizing the needs, as I stated earlier, there'll be things that we can't fund under the programs I work on, and there'll be some of these things that we can fund. We're just looking for your all's general needs, your...
Well, and I'm trying to make this hearing productive by finding out what it is you have money for that we could need, you know?
Infrastructure, art service.
Okay, okay.
I mean, that's one of the things.
Water systems, wastewater systems, flood protection, drainage, fire protection, facilities, equipment, rehabilitation of some family units, that's where we're doing hookups to water or sewer, streets, roads, bridges, community neighborhood centers, multi-use centers, senior citizens, libraries, social services, facilities, solid waste systems, recreational facilities, economic development, which is job creation. Downtown revitalization's in there, although it's extremely hard to do. Handicap access, energy generation, code enforcement, demolition and clearance, construction rehabilitation of schools, construction expansion, rehabilitation of hospitals, nursing homes, public health facilities, hookups to existing water, wastewater, or natural gas systems, and fixed generators. Now, that huge list, I can tell you, the state funds water and wastewater projects, senior citizen centers, healthcare units, county healthcare units, some childcare units, water treatment plants, and wastewater treatment plants, predominantly with this money.
Okay.
About half of these dollars goes to doing economic development, and those are typically public-private partnerships with existing, these days it's been manufacturers, although we were extremely lucky and got a project with the Crescent Hotel, which was one of the few that's ever been done that wasn't a manufacturing company that created jobs. So, yes, sir?
As an example, would, like the magnetic street, the bridge that's needing redone, is that something that would fall under purview?
Yeah, we've just recently completed a couple of bridges, one in Tawney Town and one in Springtown.
It's not big, but it's, but it would, oh, good. I mean, that's...
Yeah, the, yeah, drainage issues and stuff like that, bridges, these are things that are affordable. Yes, sir?
Connecting a new hospital to sewer?
Pardon?
Connecting a new hospital to sewer?
Wet ass in people at the state.
Plus, obviously, some residents might could get thrown in there too.
Yeah, usually we're connecting, we're connecting low-income residences, usually.
But we could connect the residents as we ran out to the hospital. And then that high school as a senior citizen center might be interesting. Okay.
So we'll, we'll take those issues and got them all down. I got them on my recorder.
Maybe, Pat, do you have something?
Okay, and then we've covered most of the hot spots that we touched on in '07, and revisited again tonight, and added a little bit more. So what I can tell you is that the application that we're after right now is, has to do with the drainage right here between the buildings. Okay, we're trying to get the state to give us a couple hundred thousand dollars to remedy this situation out here. And we think we can get that done as we look at the bigger picture to try to go after some bigger money. The city of Eureka Springs, fortunate or unfortunate, you all are below, I mean, above, you're above 51% low to moderate income according to HUD. This makes you all eligible for community development block grant funds, which you all have not been eligible for in the past. The only reason I was here in the past was because we were doing an economic development project with the hotel over here doing a sewer line. You'll probably see a good bit of me in the next few years as we try to gather in these grants for things that you guys absolutely need.
But you're talking about the whole tunnel system, or the creek?
Right now, we're going to do this little, we're talking this, but yeah, we're looking at that and about three other critical issues. The dam is one of them. Yeah, so we're looking at several critical issues right now that are doable with these dollars. Yeah, if we get state to agree to it. But the state's the one who's encouraged us to do this application tonight, by the way.
Did you say you were considering Black Bass Dam?
It's one of those items that we're talking about a lot.
Okay.
Right now.
Okay. Let me clarify, when you say state?
Right.
Let's clarify, who, the state, the legislature?
No.
The senate?
When I talk about the state, I'm talking about the Arkansas Economic Development Commission, the AEDC. Those are the folks that administer the HUD community development block grants.
And that's composed of whom?
Uh...
Not the names, but just the types of people on it?
Yeah, it's the Economic Development Commission. There's about 10 or 12 commissioners, and...
Citizens of the state, or?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I have no idea, usually I work with the state employees.
That's okay.
So how would we get the old high school up to the top of the list?
Old high school has already had two or three meetings already.
I understand that, but you're the one?
No, ma'am, I'm just, the, I'm the fellow that puts together the grants applications.
All we're doing is just taking the public hearing at this point and establishing projects. And then depending on the grants and monies available, it depends on where the priorities are going to lie.
Right, we kind of give a broad brush on these priorities, because we can still use the same hearing and the same resolutions we're going to address a little later. We can use these for multiple different projects. That's why they're kind of non-specific. And so hopefully, we can use this for at least two more applications, I'm hoping. Usually, they'll let us go a couple of years with this stuff, sometimes three if we're lucky. So if anybody's got any questions, thrilled to be in Eureka working, just thrilled to come to Eureka anytime. Love to come over here. Too bad I couldn't drag my wife here. She's working tonight, believe me, she would've come. But it's a pleasure to be here. It's a pleasure to be working for you all, to working with you all, trying to get some things that I know you all need. And then when those resolutions come up, I'll be sitting right here to answer them. They don't sound very fun. They sound kind of terrible, but they're not as bad as they sound, and I'll go over those with you all at that time. If there's any other questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them. We're currently going to try to go after a grant for a couple hundred thousand for this problem right down here for the immediate need, and then we're going to work on a couple of long-term things, which we've discussed this evening. With that, I think I'm done. Don't be.
Do you have a copy of the list of things that are possible?
You bet. They come right out of my manual. There you go.
Do we have any other public comments? Not hearing any additional public comments, and I can call this public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir.
We have somebody...
They think it's public comments.
Yeah.
Not regarding...
As opposed to the public hearing.
This is for the public hearing, or public comments on the public hearing.
Yeah, this is public comment. We're...
Okay, no further comment on the public hearing. Opened public hearing, I'm going to call the public hearing closed, and we will continue on with our normal meeting. Do I have an approval of the agenda? Your motion?
Move through, second.
All right. I have one item I would like to, we have a representative from the hospital commission here who's going to give our, their annual financial report. I'd like to move that up to the new business and get him out of here before we start doing the resolutions, if that's satisfactory.
Can he go under the hospital commission report?
Even better. He can even do that.
Even better. We'll move him up to the hospital commission report. I'm sure he'll be happy with that.
Not treating him too nice. I don't know.
Mickey?
I'd like to add, and I don't know if we're under unfinished or new, a short discussion of the blackjack motorcycle franchise. We need to discuss an update on that that we've been doing over the years.
Waiting for a second?
Uh-huh.
Second.
Thank you.
I'll make any beg for it, sorry.
But he's writing.
Okay.
Is that number nine?
We'll put that number nine in the new business.
Let's add the fourth quarter 2014 report, please. The fourth quarter 2014 report, it will take about two minutes.
We'll move.
Second.
All right. Anybody else? Are all those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so move. Everybody read the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes from last meeting.
Second.
Any errors, additions, corrections? If not, all those in favor of approving the minutes that submitted, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right. We don't have anything on the, anybody giving a, a application for any commission? So what we'll do now, which is go right into the hospital.
Want to do public comments first?
Comes after.
Comes after.
It comes after. Yep.
Commissions. He was doing the commission committee.
Oh.
He's reporting there.
Okay, yep.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just going to pass these out.
Go ahead, if you want to.
Okay.
State your name, please.
I'm Bob Olin, and I've been with the commission for the past three and a half years. And we just finished our audit for the year 2014. And I think 2014 was very, very exciting for us in the commission, because for, I think probably, at least since I've been with them, we were able to accomplish a few things that we were never able to accomplish before. And that made all of us in the commission feel very, very good. But let's go through the report, and starting out, we show that under the current assets, we have two accounts at Cornerstone, one for $29.55, and the other one is for $1,448.839. With RVs, we have a CD there for $365,926. We also have an account recorded at $35,720. And income accounted, interest was $1,261. And we also had an ambulance deposit for $105,000. That brought our total total assets to $1,961,14. Under fixed assets, we have the land at $1,000, building at $63,003, and a depreciation of $62,000 with an increase of, excuse me, of $2,000. Our total assets was $1,962,114.
On this page, a couple of questions before we switch to the next page. The Cornerstone Bank, one and a half million, there was discussion once upon a time about the Federal Deposit Insurance Corporation, and whether that amount of money is covered, or is it unsecured under...
No, we had to take out additional insurance to make sure that that is covered. And so that is totally, but you're right, under the government, $250,000.
Yeah.
So, but we took out the extra insurance on this.
And then the last, what building does the hospital commission own that's $63,000?
You know, I would have to get back to you on that, because...
Oh, you know?
I would assume it's the hospital billing, it's just depreciated out.
It's just depreciated out. That's what I, because at one time...
Same thing.
I'm just, I'm just confused.
That'd be my guess, but...
But it appeared...
Oh, you know what, it could be the little building next to the hospital.
The house?
The little purple house?
Yeah.
And that, and that other house where they had...
Where they had the gift shop.
The gift shop.
Okay, because I was going to say, wouldn't we be carrying the hospital, even though it's depreciated out, on the, on the city?
It was by value.
Okay, I'm just...
It'd be on the city, you're right.
Thank you, sorry, Dan.
No, no.
I think you're right.
One of the liabilities, we started the year, we finished the year of 2013 with $1,577,063. And our current income for this year was $385,050, which brought us up to a grand total at the end of this year of $1,962,114. In the revenue department, our first was the LHC Home Care, gave us $182,655. Our rent from Alliance came to $195,000, other contribution $490, and our interest off of our CDs and money in the bank came to $8,410. Our total revenue for the year was $386,555, and so the gross profit was $386,555. Our operating expenses, and this is where we feel very, very good also, our legal fees for the year was $175. And going back a few years, that particular line was $40,000, $45,000, $50,000 a year. And so we felt very, very good that, you know, we didn't have the legal fees that we've had in the past. Our accounting fees was $1,045. Our post office box was $56. Our bond was $210, and bank fees, and those were money orders for $19. So our total total expenses was $1,505. So net income for the year, $385,050,94. And for... And for our expenses, and the biggest was the ambulance, and that was $105,000. And that was for the equipment for the new ambulance. And also, it included two new gurneys for the existing ambulance. And so those ran about $13,000 apiece, but were very, very well worth the money, believe me.
And the ambulance hasn't costed out on this yet?
No, what happened, well, what happened was that the ambulance was supposed to be delivered to Eureka Springs in November. And because of some problems, that ambulance was delivered in February.
Okay.
But in February, we issued a check to the mayor for $180,000, $186, I believe it was, mayor. And that ambulance is 100% paid for as we speak.
Thank you.
So, after all our expenses and $105,000 for the year, we came out at $279,627. And at the end of the period, we ended with $1,817,721. And I would like to add that it gave us a great deal of pleasure in regards to purchasing the new ambulance for Eureka Springs. And I think this is one of the first large projects that we've been able to do. So many times our hands are tied in how we can spend this money. But I think we maybe have opened up a new avenue. And I say that for the simple reason, whether it's replacing equipment or buying new equipment, that's going to make us heads above everyone else. That is something that you can count on the commission. And we'll be open for any ideas that you might have. And we've got a few ideas also. And that, that is my report.
Okay, any questions?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Well, congratulations on holding the legal fees down.
I thought that was terrific.
AC?
Thank you.
Lightning and a pause?
All right. We'll move on to our public comments. Laura Coker.
My things are in my car.
Laura Coker.
She wakes me up. Well, hello. I hope I'm not like a bad penny, I have my three-minute mark going. So, thank you for your time. This is about civil rights and fluoride. It turns out that our fluoride equipment is in place, and we anticipate fluoridating the water in Eureka Springs and Carroll Boone the end of this month or early April. They're doing the walkthrough, run-through at this particular time. And I'd like to give the highest of credit to the people of Carroll Boone and our own water experts who have done their very best to give us quality products in the safest possible fashion. So anyway, let me, let me run through a few things that are crucial. In the 1930s, H.B. Churchill, Aluminum Company of America, later Alcoa, felt that the bauxite containing aluminum in the water might be causing mottled teeth. And I actually think he might be correct. I think that aluminum, when combined with fluoride, might in fact be producing bone disease and mottled teeth and the defects in dention. But the USPS, Dr. Trent Lyde, stated how high fluoride levels in water could be before visible severe dental fluorosis occurred. 1936, they determined, again, Dr. Trent Lyde, fluoride levels of up to 1.0 ppm in drinking water did not cause the more severe forms of dental fluorosis. So I state to you, the proposed 1.2 part per million in our water is knowingly proved to cause fluorosis, period. Therefore, to mitigate the harm, we need to challenge the medical board. The CDC recommends .07, excuse me, part per million. And the 1.2 is clearly going to cause dental fluorosis and other diseases that may be associated and proved now, with more recent evidence, as harmful to human health, including cognitive, memory, Alzheimer's, and other neurodegenerative diseases. So we need a, need the legislature to also produce an indemnity program that will cover the damages for excessive fluoride. Now, as far as Mr. Mitchell goes, I'm glad that he's going to be able to present to the Board of Health the definition of a prescription and recommendation. So a recommendation is a voluntary compliance with an individually suggested, under a therapeutic umbrella, professionally... Oh, that can't be right. Am I done already? Oh, well, I'm sorry, Eureka. Call me, be there or be square, because we have so much we can do. Pardon me, my enthusiasm does get away, but... I'm just saying, we can do a lawsuit, we can do any number of things to challenge this, and we can win a lawsuit as I review the literature by the American Dental Association. So, Mr. Mayor, please call the ADA and get us some copies, because they did not send them to me. Evidently, my negative commentary was not received very well.
Thank you. Ferguson Stewart?
Mayor Berry, thank you. And Alderman, Ferguson Stewart, 7 Harvey Road. And I'm here again to try to get you to understand my viewpoint on infrastructure. Your mayor has done a great job and continues. He went to the quorum court and reminded them we needed to get this work done now. The rains have already come. We've already seen new markers in the middle of the street there that indicate to me there may be more structural problems on Main Street that may conducive to this failure of that tunnel. I do not know, I'm not a civil engineer, don't claim to be one. However, I was out observing the St. Patrick's Day parade. I do that, I walk through the town, I love my job as a park commissioner, and I thank you for letting me be a park commissioner in this wonderful town of Eureka Springs. But now I see a large portion of the parade is full of protesters. I also noticed, as I look at my feet, they're getting wet from another broken pipe. The same broken pipe that was broken last year continues to leak, and you have done nothing to fix this infrastructure. This infrastructure will continue to fail. It will continue to cause structural problems in our city. I don't know what we can do. I don't have the monies in my pocket. All I know is that we need to identify, even your, your Alderman Perkentile said, as a mining engineer, it's worse than we thought below ground. Please focus on the infrastructure. There's sewer problems, there's, there's problems with the contamination of the springs, there's, there's cracks in our streets. We need, and in my word alone, word three. There are people that have been there 20 years, inside the city limits, that don't even have sewer service. What's that all about? Why is there no plan to expand the service sewer up East Mountain Road? What have we got to do? But I hope you can find a way. Thank you for your time, God bless.
Pat Matzakis? She's gone. Anybody else out there? All right. Let's close our public comments. And we'll go down to our new business, and the first, no. Item of new business is authorization resolution. Do we have a motion to discuss?
Well, if we have to, so move.
Second.
All right. This is one of our first resolutions that we need to do for the Economic Development District Program to be eligible for part of, for the funds, and for future funds. Basically, I think this is just noting that it's okay for us to submit an application for grants.
All right. Make a motion that we read and approve with the reading authorization, the authorization resolution.
Second.
I guess to give it a number, I'll have to...
Hit what you will. Of course it has to have a number. My goodness.
Well, you have to say so.
Let's not give it a number. Let's keep this.
So it's for approval?
Let's do it without a number.
Let's just do it, yeah. Way to go.
So, wait a minute. Did we have a second on that? Mickey's second.
Okay. We can do a voice vote, right?
Yes. It's for approval, really should be by roll call.
All right, roll call.
So be it. Ms. Seller?
Yes.
Mr. DeBito?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
McLemone?
Uh huh.
Mr. Snyder?
Yep.
Six, zero. Number will be 657. A resolution authorizing the submission of an application for Arkansas Community and Economic Development Program funds to the state of Arkansas. To the state of Arkansas? Whereas the city of Eureka Springs is applying for funds through the Arkansas Community and Economic Development Program, and whereas it is necessary that certain conditions be met as part of the application requirements, and whereas the city of Eureka Springs has conducted a public hearing and has an active citizen participation plan and/or community development plan, and as part of the application process will receive and consider comments on community development and housing needs and other proposed activities, and whereas as a result of the community development planning activities, the city of Eureka Springs will identify and prioritize the community development and housing needs. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that the city mayor is hereby authorized, on behalf of the city of Eureka Springs, to submit an application to the state of Arkansas for funds under the provisions of the Arkansas Community and Economic Development Program, and to expend funds to accomplish such development activities if grant funds are awarded.
I do need a motion to approve.
That may have been called out.
All right. Okay, our second item is designation resolution, which basically authorizes, I have a motion for that.
Make a motion to assign the resolution designating Northwest, blah, 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 and read it for passage.
Second. After you give it a number?
Yeah. I thought, didn't I say that?
Yeah.
All right, do, any discussion?
There's none anymore.
There being no discussion?
We're taking a vote on it, right?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. DeBito?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. McLemone?
Uh huh.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Seller?
Yes.
Six, zero.
658.
Resolution number will be 658. A resolution designating the Northwest Arkansas Economic Development District Incorporated as a consultant to assist the city in the administration of a grant to the Arkansas Community and Economic Development Program if such a grant is awarded. Whereas the city of Eureka Springs is making a grant application to the Arkansas Economic Development Commission for funding under the provisions of the Arkansas Community and Economic Development Program, and whereas the city of Eureka Springs desires to secure the services of an administrative consultant to assist in the implementation of the grant application and the administration of such a product, project, if awarded, and whereas the city of Eureka Springs has a longstanding relationship with the Northwest Arkansas Economic Development District Incorporated and feels confident that they have demonstrated expertise in the implementation of grant applications and project administration under the Arkansas Community and Economic Development Program, and whereas the Northwest Arkansas Economic Development District Incorporated is preparing and implementing a grant application with minimal cost to the city of Eureka Springs, and whereas the Arkansas Economic Development Commission will allocate funds to the city of Eureka Springs to pay administrative costs incurred under any successful application. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that the Northwest Arkansas Economic Development District Incorporated be and is hereby designated to serve as a project administrator of the Arkansas Community and Economic Development Program-funded grant, and that the mayor of the city of Eureka Springs is hereby authorized to enter into a contract with the Northwest Arkansas Economic Development District Incorporated for the provision of administrative services in accordance with the regulations of the Arkansas Community and Economic Development Program and subject to the mutual consent of the city, the consultant, and the Arkansas Economic Development Commission.
All right. Next is our anti-displacement issue. Have a motion to...
I move that we give this resolution a number and read it for passage.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. McLemone?
I have one question about it, and I guess it just, it's talking about demolition of properties, and so I figured it'd be like some tenements or something of that nature that you remove, and you've had them people out, so you have to replace that kind of thing, is that...
Right. This program got this resolution in the 70s when a lot of federal funds were being used to create airports, and they were using the airport construction as an excuse to eliminate low-income housing. So we got this one. The state of Arkansas will not fund a project that requires any type of displacement with these dollars. As you can see, it's cost prohibitive to...
Where else would we build our airport?
Right. But we've, we don't work on projects that displace houses, that's for sure.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
As long as, I was reading through it, it doesn't say there would be any conflict with the historic district commission, because obviously that would be something unusual for us in a certain area in our town. Correct.
Oh, yeah, we have to be real careful when we're working here in town.
Thank you.
Y'all got a lot of historic stuff.
Any further comments, questions? All right, roll call.
Ms. Seller?
Yes.
Mr. McLemone?
Yeah.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. DeBito?
Yes.
Ms. Seller?
Yes.
Yes. You haven't called me.
Yes.
Did I not call you first?
No.
No, you called me first.
Joyce got to vote twice, you little rascal, yeah?
I'm going to remember that. Mickey, Joyce doing it.
Lucky dog.
You just say Joyce Seller, I say yes, that's all I'm trying to say.
There's an exception.
And Mr. Snyder and Ms. Seller? Okay, we are on 659. A resolution affirming the city of Eureka Springs anti-displacement plan. Whereas the city of Eureka Springs will replace all occupied and vacant, occupiable, low- and moderate-income dwellings demolished or converted to use other than as low and/or moderate-income housing as a direct result of activities assisted with funds provided under the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 as amended and described in 24... What's it say, federal regulations?
Code of federal regulations.
Code of federal regulations, 570.496, thank you, A B number one. And that all replacement housing will be provided within three years of the commencement of the demolition or rehabilitation relating to the conversion. And whereas the city of Eureka Springs will provide relocation assistance as described in 570.496A B 2 to each low-end or moderate-income household displaced by demolition or by the conversion of a low- and/or moderate-income dwelling to another use as direct result of assisted activities, and whereas if any such project will involve demolition or conversion of low- or moderate-income dwelling units, the following... following will be provided. One, the general location on a map and approximate number of dwelling units by size, number of bedrooms, that will be demolished or converted to a use other than low-end or moderate income dwelling units as a direct result of the assisted activity and two, a time schedule for commencement and completion of the demolition or conversion and three, the general location on a map and approximate number of dwelling units by size, number of bedrooms, that will be provided as replacement dwelling units and four, a source of funding and a time schedule for the provision of replacement dwelling units and five, the basis for concluding that each replacement dwelling will remain a low-end or moderate income dwelling unit for at least ten years from the date of initial occupancy. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that consistent with the goals and objectives of activities assisted under the act as amended, the city of Eureka Springs will make every effort to minimize the displacement of persons from homes.
All right. Next is our civil rights resolution.
I make a, I make a motion that we give this resolution a number and read it for passage.
Second.
Any discussion, comments? There being none, we call her up.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. McClanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Yes.
Six, zero. Resolution six, six, zero. A resolution affirming the city of Eureka Springs policy prohibiting use of excessive force by law enforcement agencies within the city's jurisdiction against individuals engaged in nonviolent civil rights demonstrations. Whereas, the city of Eureka Springs is applying for funds through the Arkansas Community and Economic Development Program and whereas, as required by the House Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 as amended, it shall be the policy of the city of Eureka Springs to ensure that the following are true. One, the city of Eureka Springs has adopted and is enforcing this policy prohibiting the use of excessive force by law enforcement agencies within its jurisdiction against any individuals engaged in nonviolent civil rights demonstrations. Two, the city of Eureka Springs will ensure that all law enforcement agencies within its jurisdiction will enforce all applicable state and local laws against physically barring entrance to or exit from a facility or location which is the subject of such nonviolent civil rights demonstrations within its jurisdiction. Three, in response to nonviolent civil rights demonstrations, the city of Eureka Springs will be mindful and protective of the rights of all participants in such demonstrations as well as any onlookers, bystanders, or any other persons located in the vicinity or owning property in the vicinity. Four, in connection with such demonstrations, the use of force shall be permitted only when necessary to protect the rights of individuals or to uphold the law. In no event shall the use of force be in excess of that necessary to achieve the lawful goals of the city of Eureka Springs be permitted. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that consistent with the goals and objectives of activities assisted under this act as amended, the city of Eureka Springs will adopt and enforce the policy contained herein.
And a final resolution for the fair housing resolution.
Go, Bob, go. Go ahead.
Go for it.
Sure, it's just we'll give it a number and read it for passage. That's all you do. Hard. Give it a number.
Okay, let's make the motion that we give this resolution a number and read it for passage.
And I'll second his thing. Thank you.
Is this technically against the law for us to pass it?
Hmm?
Well, it's against the law to pass any kind of a resolution that says you won't discriminate.
Not until June.
Okay, I'm just bringing it up.
Good point, though, I like that.
Mr. McClanahan?
I just was curious, are these, are these, did we prepare these or these can, basically? That's what I think.
These are standardized, they come out of my admin manual, and I've got them towed down and generic as possible, but still acceptable by state.
Perfect.
You better check this one out.
Two things, what she brought up, that is a good question.
Which, what did she bring up?
In regards to the...
The state just passed a law, making it against the law to pass a resolution saying you're not going to discriminate. And you'll notice it calls nobody out and lists absolutely nobody. Doesn't matter.
A resolution is not a law.
Right. We're revering federal regulations.
Well, that's number one that needs to be looked into and then rub their noses.
That's why there's no, no people listed at all. No classes, no age, no limits, no race.
Rub their noses in it. Anyway, the second point, do you happen to know, does every state in the union have one of these kind of things, or us, or what?
Yes, they all have a community development law grant programs.
Okay, so they, all the states have to go through this?
Yes.
Including Missouri?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? All right, there being none, we'll have a roll call.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Elder?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. McClanahan?
Hi.
Six, zero. Resolution number will be six, six, one. Resolution affirming the city of Eureka Springs fair housing and equal opportunity policy. Whereas, the Congress of the United States of America has declared that all citizens of the United States have the same right to inherit, purchase, lease, sell, hold, and convey real property and whereas, the Congress of the United States of America has declared that fair and open housing is to be the law of the land and whereas, the Congress of the United States of America has also declared that all citizens will have an equal opportunity for employment. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that, one, it is hereby declared to be the policy of the city of Eureka Springs to adhere to and comply with all provisions of the laws prohibiting discriminatory policies in relation to both private and public use of housing, property ownership, and employment opportunities. The city of Eureka Springs supports open housing and equal opportunity employment. Two, it is further herewith resolved that the city of Eureka Springs will promote fair housing and equal opportunity employment for all persons and utilize its efforts and energies to end any type of discrimination within the city of Eureka Springs.
That's two, it's against the law.
All right, thank you, council members, for passing all those.
Thank you all very much. I know these things are not very fun, but they're a required element of the application. When we put the application in, I'd highly like to have it all assembled by the rest of this week and ready to overnight it Monday before it goes to drop dead deadline Tuesday. Down to the law.
And let us remind you, show us the money, please.
Absolutely. And we do apologize for coming at you kind of quick with this. Our meeting, we held was a couple of times this winter, we talked to the state. Basically, the state has encouraged us, the AEDC folks have encouraged us to apply. We're a little thin, we don't really have all of our ducks lined up because it's going to happen so quick, but we're gonna package up the best package we can, we're gonna ship it to them, and if they don't give us money, at least we'll start a conversation on a bigger picture for you all. We gotta start that conversation somewhere. Since they were encouraging us to apply, we thought we'd jump right in with both feet and try.
We appreciate your service.
Oh, I look forward to coming over here a bunch. I'm here to tell you, I'm so tired of working out west, up there doing all this stuff. Thank you all so much.
Can we fax this to you?
Yeah, y'all can scan me over a copy once they've been signed and recorded off.
Okay. All right, next order of business is an ordinance to waive competitive bidding for work to be done on the town.
What happened to the council?
What happened to number six?
Oh, I'm sorry, Jim's right over, James is, sorry about that. Motion to discuss...
Second.
Council meeting room. All right, James.
Well, tonight was a perfect example of why we need to move out of this storage room. We sequester people in the hallway, subject them to a loud television, doors opening, people coming in. They walk down a long, dark hallway through a closed door and into a meeting room with lights and cameras. They're left with no other space but to virtually stand on top of us. Unless you're lucky to get the three seats in here, you're sequestered to the hallway. Reminds me a lot of going to the principal's office. It's not conducive to good government. We, as council people, face one another when we should be facing our constituents. This unfortunately encourages a little back and forth amongst council people, whereas our comments should be directed to the mayor and the citizens we serve. If you look around us, we've had the county move their file cabinets into our meeting It is claustrophobic, it is not encouraging to good government. We have a courthouse, courtroom upstairs that we use when we have large meetings. I don't see why we can't use it for all of our meetings. This is a travesty to the public that we are supposed to serve. It intimidates them, it is not encouraged to the free flow and exchange of ideas. I've watched people come in here just visibly shaking to where they can't even hold their papers. If they were able to sit in the audience and watch us do our work and be a part of the whole process, I think that would be conducive to them feeling at ease with the people that they've elected to represent them, and I feel that it would be more conducive to more people to come before us to give us their opinions and their ideas about how they see the city.
That's harder.
We actually agree for a change. Although, and I know we've been trying to get something done literally for years because this room is so cramped. In view of the lack of an elevator going up to the courtroom, that is the only real problem that I see in that regard. We can always start meeting. Our city property, the main trolley offices, we have parking and level floor, plenty of room. That is an alternative, but right now, almost anything but this room would be really nice. The auditorium has been brought up, I don't think that's financially doable, but it would be nice. But, yeah, the old school property is talked about quite a bit. I would love to see that as the eventual home for council, but something's got to be done because this really sucks.
Mr. McClanahan?
The problem with the courtroom upstairs is the acoustics are poor, real poor. So you just have to, each individual had to be mic'd, you know, for a council, especially spread out in a, in a line, and, you know, if we're to speak, I mean, this, this microphone we have is for sole purpose of the television. It's not to increase our volume in here, so it's, I don't know, it'd be, it's, it's a tough venue. On a temporary basis, maybe something like what Echo has out there, that's a whole lot bigger, I don't know if that offered to us or not, but they have a nice meeting room out there. That's where I went to hospital commission meeting, out there one day, and that was, that was a good spot, but, you know, I agree, it's certainly cramped in here, it's worked this way for as long as I can remember, but it would be nice to have something that was a little more user-friendly.
The last time the question of the lease on the courthouse here came up, I suggested this to their, to then-mayor, Mr. Morris, and he absolutely, Mr. Page, and he absolutely would not even discuss it and insisted that we had to sign a lease on this courthouse for rent. Now, I don't know when this lease is up, is it, does it have another year or two years? Well, whenever it does, we had discussed moving up to the transit building before, and the only problem there seemed to be the cost of moving the television equipment up there, which we wanted to continue that, and I still think it's a good idea, and I still don't see why we can't do it. I think it would be a great place to meet, it's a huge room.
Mr. Mitchell?
Could we ask to allow you to explore that opportunity or to designate somebody to explore that, and then we'll hear back?
Are you talking about the transit building or other locations?
Another location that would be feasible, that would, could be set up with the televised equipment, take care of an audience, and handle the acoustics? And parking?
Just that, giving up the lease on this building is not a part of the equation at all. We're not doing that, no plans on doing that. It's just...
Yeah, I know.
...locate, just...
But we can.
Just the council meeting.
Yeah, well...
James?
To the question of the handicap accessibility, yes, that's an unfortunate thing, but in probably the ten or more years that I've been a council person, maybe one handicap person, we do have a stair climber out here.
Everybody hates us.
So, you know, the problems of getting up the first flight of stairs are no different than getting up the second flight of stairs. So, we're either inaccessible or we're accessible. We have the motorized stair climbers, so when and if we do have a handicap person, you know, the same protocol to get them up to this level is the same protocol to get them up to the next level.
All right, Vicki?
Well, we've been working on this for a long time, and I do know the biggest problem with switching council to elsewhere was the cable hookup and broadcasting stuff. And I know back during Dana, Cox was talked to, and it was gonna be rather pricey. I still think since we gave them a monopoly that they should be able to give us a deal, but that could be checked into also on your part, Mr. Mayor. As far as handicappers and inaccessibility, Phil Schimaca came to quite a few meetings while she was still alive, and she said the same thing I heard from a lot of my handicappers, that chair is horrendous and embarrassing and slow, and we won't even go into why we have that stupid chair instead of an elevator, because that almost put me in jail, because they chose the chair over the thing. Anyway, so we do need to consider we would have a whole lot more handicappers, and believe it or not, we have quite a few in this area. We would have a lot more coming if it was more properly and easily accessible.
Quite frankly, there's no reason why we need to broadcast these meetings live. There's no reason.
They're fun.
If anybody wants to experience a live council meeting, I encourage them to come down here. They can be taped delayed. If moving the cable is the issue, we can tape delay these meetings and broadcast them to the public. If people want to experience a live council meeting, I encourage them to come down here and participate in the council meeting. But there is no real reason why these have to be live broadcasts.
Mr. McClanahan?
The advantage of having them in this building is the access to records, anything that we need that related to the, you know, to doing our business as a council person in all the offices downstairs, you know, I mean, that's, that's the plus of having it here. Another venue that I thought might be a possibility that might be already be wired for all that is, is the new, is the little theater at the high school. They may have allowed for all that in there, and that's, 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 I mean, it would be a great venue for this kind of thing, whether it could be done or not, I can't say. I don't know if you've been in the theater room that they have.
Let me kind of jump in here for a moment. I agree with what y'all were saying, and the, when I... I, I agree with what y'all were saying and the, we, when I was, I believe under Dana Joy's administration, we looked into the school when it was being built and even talked to the administrator and there's issues there that we couldn't use because we'd be there after hours and they wouldn't allow us access to the building after hours.
Well, that takes care of that.
Unfortunately. It would have been a perfect, perfect solution. The transit building, we've talked about that and I think that at one point, I may have even drawn up plans to have meeting rooms up there. But the video and, and I'm not sure that if y'all were talking about the downstairs, it's still pretty cramped.
No, we were talking upstairs and they removed their offices downstairs.
Oh, I didn't think we were talking that.
No, I wasn't talking that.
They were on board a couple of years ago.
The downstairs meeting room where they have their meetings is not much larger than this space.
You'd have to open up those doors so people would sit in that second row.
It would take some construction.